Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Bennington Select Board. It's March 25th, 2022. It's 3:00 PM, and we are at the Bennington Fire Facility. I am Jeanne Jenkins. I chair this board, and Gary is going to sit down and introduce himself right now.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey. Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm still Jim Carroll.
I'm Jean Connor.
And I'm Bruce Lee Clark.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, or this afternoon, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes for us, Jim Vires behind the camera, and Stu Hurd is somewhere in the, somewhere around. All right, so the reason for this meeting was really to have a somewhat informal discussion with Ted Brady, who is the Executive Director of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, or VLCT. And Ted contacted the town maybe two weeks ago, saying he was going to be here on Friday and in the afternoon, and would we like to meet with him? And because of open meeting law, since all of us wanted to be here, we needed to call this as a formal meeting, because we cannot, the Select Board is not allowed to meet with a quorum, to have a meeting without it being a public meeting. So my understanding is that what Ted is planning to do is give an overview of what the Vermont League of Cities and Towns can offer to the town and to communities, and then to open it up to what are top issues facing town staff, village trustees in North Bennington, and the Bennington Select Board, and then from there to open it up for discussion on whatever VLCT can help us with. So this is a special meeting, so the, you know, the format is really focused on that. And with that, all I can say is, until Ted Brady comes, we really don't have any other agenda. So that's all that's on that. So with that, I think we're going to take a five to 10-minute break and hope that we get Ted Brady. Mr. Brady, thank you so much for being here. We did already call the meeting to order, so we could make an explanation for what was going on, but we're very, very happy that you're here this afternoon, and I think briefly, maybe what we can do is go down the table again and just introduce ourselves to you, and I am thinking that maybe it also makes sense for people in the audience, some of who are connected to town government, and some of whom are here as community, can also just, you know, introduce themselves very briefly, okay? Do you want to start?
Sure. I am Ted Brady. I'm the Executive Director.
He needs a microphone.
Should I go over the podium?
Or, oh, can we put you on here?
Just sit right by the microphone. I am Ted Brady. I am the Executive Director of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which I'll go into a little more about what it is momentarily, and thank you for putting up with my tardiness.
That's fine. All right, so Stu, why don't we just start and go down the line?
Well, I'm Stuart Hurd, the Town Manager. I'm also a member of the Passive Board, which is the insurance board for the league, and I served one term on the league's board of directors, so Ted and I go back a long way.
Hi, Ted, I'm Gary Corey.
Tom Haley.
Hi, Ted.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Jean Connor.
Sarah Perrin.
And Bruce Lee Clark.
Great. Nancy Lively is our excellent note taker. Jim Vires is on the camera, and then, sir, if you would.
Yes. Like.
Mary Rogers, the villager.
Joe Masonow, Trevor Fraser.
Julie Spindack, the coordination coordinator for town.
I'm Michael McDonough. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission and Insurper Division Commission.
Great. And then at the back wall?
Oh, Bill, BBC, and Bennington Insurper.
Great. Thank you. Okidoki. So we're gonna, the format for the day is for, as I understand, is for you to provide an overview for everyone on what VLCT can offer communities, and then talk, and then give us an opportunity to talk a little bit about top issues, and then open it up for discussion.
Perfect. Would you like me here or at the podium? You tell me where it works for everyone.
It's up to Jim.
Jim?
We're good.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'm going to pass out a member guide to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which you can follow along with, kind of like you're at church and following a hymnal, and I'll leave a bunch here in case any of the audience was interested in taking a peek as well. So first, highest level, I think we have some one or two new Select Board members this year, is that right? No, or are you guys all returning? Thank God. That makes my job a lot easier. But real highest level, the reason I'm here is because I am new. I was appointed as the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Executive Director a year ago, and I have, since day one, wanted to get on the road and meet with as many Select Boards as possible, but the little thing called the pandemic made it impossible, so this is the first time I've been out on the road since I started to actually meet with my membership. For those that don't know, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is a nonprofit organization that is a wholly owned instrumentality of Vermont's 246 cities and towns. That whole 251 thing and the 251 club, that number is irrelevant from my perspective, because we are made up primarily of the 246 cities and towns. Every city and town in Vermont is a member of our organization. In addition to that, you know, there's 30 some odd villages that are associate members, and another 110 units of government, like your solid waste management districts, new and improved, your communication union districts, your fire districts, that are also members, but they're associate members. They don't have all of the voting rights and such that you do as a town, as one of those 246 towns. If you're looking, oh no, I need my member guide too. If you're looking at your member guide, we, our purpose is on the center, the center panel. And why I'm here is because I want to make sure people understand our purpose, but being a veteran Select Board, I don't worry that you don't. I'm here because I took over this job at the league, and I was attracted to the league position, because I think the league is a completely unharnessed, or is a sleeping giant. You know, we are made up of 246 legislative bodies that are elected by the people of their communities, and your opinion matters. And I'm trying to bring the league to a place where we define a vision for Vermont, and then we convince state, federal leaders, and local leaders that local government can implement that vision and can help implement that vision for Vermont, which is a little different than I think what our historic role has been. And so our historic role is these five core things that we do. We support our members. The primary way we do that is by providing you with legal guidance. You know, any Select Board member, any town official, any elected official, your clerk, they know this, they can call us and get very simple legal opinions. When it gets into the deep stuff, you need your town attorney, obviously. Bennington has used us, Bennington officials in the last five years have contacted that Municipal Assistance Center 30 times, just to get confidential advice about how to do their job, right? That's our core function, and that, when I told people I was coming to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, I come here, by the way, as the former Deputy Secretary of the Agency of Commerce, where I've worked with many of you before, the former Executive Director of, this former State Director of USDA Rural Development, and a former longtime staffer for Senator Patrick Leahy in community and economic development work. Why I came here was, when I told people I was coming here, every, almost to a T, every single municipal official told me how valuable this Municipal Assistance Center is. And so since I've come there, we've increased the capacity of the Municipal Assistance Center by 25%. We hired a new attorney, and we hired, for the first time ever, a finance professional. So we now have somebody that you can call the Municipal Assistance Center and say, "I need help with my budget." And before, we would say, "Well, then you should talk to an accountant." Now we can say, "Let's get Sarah Macy on the phone," who is the former Finance Director for the Town of Essex, and can actually walk through, can actually use the software you use, and help you do that. The second area that we've historically done is provide knowledge, right? We have a bookstore where you can buy the famous Book of Wolf, a reminder that, as your town clerk will undoubtedly tell you, it's time to license your dog, but we have an entire book that tells you how you, as a Select Board, can deal with, you know, dog complaints and dog ordinances and all these things. We have dozens of books like that. We have a Select Board manual on how to be a Select Board member. We have a manual on following open meeting law. You go down the lists. We have a lot of knowledge there, as well as model policies, and that's a big piece of what we do. Representation. We are your voice, and you, I want this to be clear, is the Select Board's voice, right? The Town of Bennington's voice, the government's voice, in the State House. And going back to my point earlier, the league is known as having a lot of opinions in the State House, and people in the State House know that we're going to have a position on every bill, because you have a position on everything. I am really interested in trying to get us to have that common vision, and telling people how we think things should be done, as opposed to telling them that they shouldn't be done one way or the other. And a good example of this this year, we have a municipal ordinance bill in the State House, a municipal authority bill, excuse me, in the State House, S-181, that I believe is on the Senate floor today, it passed out a committee, that would put in statute more local authority for you to exercise, and just three examples of that, the local option tax. Right now, you need to go either change your charter and get it approved by the legislature to implement a local option tax. This would change that process, supported in the Senate Finance Committee, supported in the Senate Appropriations Committee, hopefully supported in the full Senate. It would allow you to implement ways to recall elected officials, right? So if somebody decides not to show, or is doing something that violates the conflict of interest statutes, you'd be able to actually implement a policy without going to the legislature and asking them for permission to do something. And so we're working with the legislature to try to give you more authorities, and that's a big piece. It's a little different this year. Chair, shall I stop and take questions as I go, or should I keep going?
I think go ahead and share information, and then we'll...
Another big piece in representation this year, we're working on a bill that, actually, a Southern Vermont rep, Representative Laura Sibilia from Dover, has been championing a bill to do municipal fuel switching. It would provide $50 million of ARPA money to municipalities in the form of assessment grants, and then $250,000 implementation grants to make energy efficiency and fuel switching upgrades to your municipal facilities. Again, we came to the legislature and said, "We know you want to work on climate issues. We, as towns, want to work with you, and here's how we'd like to do it." And actually, Representative Sibilia pitched that idea to us, and we got behind that quickly. The biggest piece of business that we have, so I'm on number four, right, the fourth star insurance that Stu is so involved in now, is your municipal insurance, and that includes your property and casualty and liability, your workers' comp, as well as unemployment insurance. Our trusts, thanks to Stu, are in the best shape they've been in more than a decade, meaning that they're financially sound and ready to protect you, in a way that does not threaten your membership rates, does not threaten your insurance rates going forward. As you know, this year, we were able to keep rates almost level. We had a very small increase, a decimal point increase, but we were also able to return $3.1 million in member equity to you. So your insurance bill essentially went down this year through that equity. In addition to that, we've upped the number of grants that we're providing to municipalities for things like training and for things like equipment. So Bennington uses our loss control program, and kudos to Bennington for doing that, to try to mitigate risk. You've used 30 hours this past year alone of our loss control staff. You folks are working with our drug and alcohol testing program to enroll 37 participants. You received a grant this year for $1,500 for HazWhopper training, which I had to Google to know what HazWhopper was. It's like a hazmat suit, right, fire department members? You received a grant worth $2,200 to help with various public works-related safety equipment, and we have this online learning system that your employees use to try to mitigate risk called Passive Learn, and I'm pleased to say that you have the most number of people enrolled in that program, 54 of all the communities down here in Southern Vermont. So kudos for trying to help mitigate that risk. Insurance is, you know, we, about 35 years ago, 30 years ago, the insurance program was created because the private sector wasn't serving municipalities enough, and the markets have hardened and softened, and right now, they're actually in a hardening position, and we're proud to offer those services, and we do that in a way that beats competition financially, but also service-wise, going back to that loss control. And then finally, connection, I think many of you have participated in Town Fair or in the amount, the many different networking opportunities we offer. We want you to feel connected as a Select Board member, as a town clerk, as a village trustee, to other trustees and Select Board members, to have shared learning experiences, and so you're not alone. Our primary job, or goal, or job, our goal is to make doing your job easier, doing your job more effective, and if we do it all right, maybe doing your job with a little more joy and happiness on a day-to-day basis, because you feel more prepared. So that's just a quick overview of what the league is. I didn't mention kind of what I'm hoping the league will be, and we were just finished up a strategic planning process, where we identified, in that process, Stu participated in a listening session in that process, we reached out to about 150 members in listening session format, and staff and board members, we reached out to stakeholders, we did a survey, where we surveyed 300 of our members, and came back to find some common themes, like the number one issue facing communities is housing, the number one thing they need our help more with is finance and IT, you know, the number one used service that the league offers is training. We're actually just doing Select Board Institute this week and the next coming month, so that's, you know, these are things we found out from our members. And we did a bunch of the typical board retreats and leadership retreats, to come up with four key areas and four, what I call the pillars of our, of our strategic plan. One, we need to grow a sustainable and relevant member-focused organization. Our goal is to provide you with services at a reasonable cost, and to show our value every day, and to evolve. Like, when I talk about providing new IT services, or providing cybersecurity services, or finance services, or shared purchasing services, I want us to evolve. We need to strengthen the capacity of local government. We're doing that through things like Select Board training, but we also recognize that it's both for volunteer, paid, appointed, elected positions. We need to provide them with, with the services and knowledge that they need. I was just up in Northern Bennington County, talking to a Select Board member that's been serving for 40 years, and another Select Board member that's been serving for 36, and one of them said that their board went from 150 years of institutional knowledge to about 50 in the last three years. You know, how do you build that capacity, so that with that 100 years, you don't lose the capability of running your government? We also are talking about developing and attracting outstanding talent to local governments, so people to Select Board positions. Unfortunately, there are actually Select Board positions in the state that are empty on balance occasionally. You know, there are clerk and treasurer and auditor and lister positions that are hard to get people to come forward for, or find people who are qualified to do those jobs, so we want to build a pipeline to get people not only into the elected positions, but also into professional positions, like your Director of Public Works. And then finally, and this is a big one for us, this is an area that the league has not worked on, we're trying to champion inclusive and resilient communities. It's the fourth pillar, and that means helping communities do diversity, equity, and inclusion work, or working on building a toolkit. It also means addressing things, like I said before, climate resiliency, helping you address climate resiliency. It also means being in the legislature and fighting for development changes that allow you to develop in your designated downtowns without Act 250 jurisdiction, because you already have such a thorough planning process that's gone through, so that your community can actually thrive and grow. And it also means trying to support housing initiatives that create new housing starts and access to affordable housing. So again, want to start from the, want to just revisit what I started with. I'm here because I'm new. I'm here because I want to know what you're concerned about. I'm here because I want to know if what I've just said resonates with you, and I want to know what's happening in Bennington that we could be helping you with even more. And I thank Stu for setting this up and inviting the entire Select Board and other municipal officials. I hadn't, in my wildest dreams, the idea that I'd get a majority of the Select Board to show up, so I didn't give him enough time to do this with like three or four weeks' notice, hence the special meeting. So thank you for being so flexible. That means the world to me, and I think it shows to me how much you value VLCT, I hope.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. So the, I'd love to hear from, I get, the Select Board, town staff, village trustee, any of the, any issues that you would like to bring up, any topics you'd like to bring up related to what Ted just spoke to. So let's, let's start there.
John will be going around with the microphone.
Okay, but let's start, okay, let's start, well, so if you guys, Mary, do you have anything? Did you want to speak? Do you have, did you have anything? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just...
I'm here to listen.
Okay, all right. So on the Select Board, then, is there anyone that would like to start us off?
Yeah, I have a question. What can you do for us, Ted?
Just told us.
I think it was rather vague, and I don't mean...
Let's flip it. Okay.
I don't mean, I mean no disrespect, but tell us, you know, give us an example, I guess, an illustration.
Or can we ask questions? Because I think some of us do have questions.
I'd like an illustration, Bruce.
I can handle that.
Okay, give us an illustration.
Well, the biggest way is if, throughout any Select Board process that you're going through, throughout any difficult issue that perhaps a citizen brings forward and say, "Hey, I want," a citizen comes forward and says, "I want to do this," and you, as a Select Board member, say, "Well, do I, can we do that? Like, how would we ever do that?" The great part is you can call our Municipal Assistance Center, or email our Municipal Assistance Center, as a Select Board member. Unfortunately, the general public doesn't have access to this, and say, "Hey, I have this issue that's been posed to me." And the Municipal Assistance Center might be able to give you, "Well, here's a model ordinance that has addressed that issue that the league has published," or "Here's an actual library item that we have published about this issue that gives you exact examples of how you could, as a Select Board member, within your legal authorities, recognizing that you only have the authority that the state of Vermont has given you, address these things." If you're a municipal official, say you're, you know, a road group, a public works director, or a fire chief, or a police chief, and you're struggling, or an HR director, and you're struggling with an HR issue, you can call Passive. Bennington is a member of Passive, Stu is on the board of our insurance side, and say, "Hey, we're having this difficult personnel issue. Can you help us figure this out?" And we can actually passive covers a certain number of hours with legal counsel, professional HR legal counsel. Now, Bennington being a mature enough town, select, and Carroll, that you obviously have an HR capacity, but even HR experts need other HR experts occasionally. And so those are the big ones. And I also know that, you know, Passive has hired a law enforcement consultant, Trevor Whipple, former police chief in Burlington, I think you folks have dealt with quite a bit. Passive's assistance there can help with, you know, tackling complex law enforcement issues, which I know they've helped with many communities. And then finally, the big question is, you know, on the insurance side, if you have a liability issue that you're facing, and you want to know how you can either mitigate that, or how you have to address it because something's gone wrong, you know, Passive's general counsel can answer questions, which is, those are just a few, few examples.
All right, so I'm just going to throw out three ideas that I think I've heard from the board, and then let's, maybe we can start with that. One was, we're always looking for board training, and so even though we are a more mature board, that, that means we always need reminders, and that, I didn't mean in age, I meant in terms of experience, although maybe. You know, we always need reminders, and we also, there are new things emerging all the time that we need training on, and so I think, thinking about how to think about board training that really meets a board that's not a new board, that would be helpful. Another area that I think we have all talked about is equity and diversity training. The Select Board, I think, has been, has been pretty aggressive, in the sense of, we've, you know, we've spent a lot of time trying to educate ourselves, but I think we would benefit from additional training, and I think also town staff would. So just looking at how we can better access that, and I will say that some of the members of your Equity Committee have, we, Tom and I have had the pleasure of talking with, and they've spoken very, very highly of what you can offer us, so I think really understanding what that is. And then the other is, we are just about to embark on updating the town's ADA plan, and so if there are model plans or any kinds of assistance you can provide us in that area, you know, we would greatly appreciate it. So, I don't know, I'm just trying to throw some ideas out that I know we've all talked about as needs.
Yes, go. Are we going to say the same thing?
I don't know.
Okay. I have a feeling we might. So I'm sorry if I'm stealing your thunder. Okay. So Bruce, Jean, Jeanne, and myself have been heavily involved for the past few years on our police working group, and we're winding down, coming to the final stage of coming up with a document that will govern the Citizen Review Board once they're seated, and I'm wondering if VLCT has any resources that we should know about. We realize there's legislation that seems to be stalled, but if there's, if there's other guidance that you could provide us, that would be wonderful.
Can I add to that one?
You can.
Okay.
Just adding what appears to be a, it appears to be, on its surface, a grant of authority to have a review board that, that does review citizens' complaints, but in fact, it doesn't, because of the clearly complex nature of, of personnel issues and law enforcement, but also because there doesn't appear to be any enabling language in the current statutory scheme, so while what it gives in one hand, it taketh away in another. And I just think there needs to be clarity here, and I'm not convinced that, after having a couple of conversations with legislators, I'm not sure that the legislature is clear about this, and it would be helpful if, you know, the league would reach out to its members and, and see what kind of a position it might take, and what kind of resources it could give us. That's one.
Great. Other, other areas that, yes?
Earlier, you mentioned the local options tax, and, you know, when we submitted, I was in the legislature, we just happened, we went before government office, everything but from our town charter has got it, except for the local option tax. At any rate, go back to what you started to talk about, just glance over, and I wasn't listening as closely as I should.
All right, where to start with those two big questions to start, and then I'll finish with local option tax. So one on police reform. The league's followed what's happening in Bennington, and really applauds just your efforts to, to address policing, and through the Citizen Oversight Board. We, the league, have a perspective on policing reform that was published in 2020. The outlines are, are, you know, the league's official stance on reform, recognizing that we need to address and hold police accountable. And one of the key blocks there, one of the key building blocks there is, they're And one of the key blocks there, one of the key building blocks there is the recognition that civilian oversight over policing, like, the, the League's position here is that that occurs through the Select Board, right? The Select Board is the civilian oversight over all municipal departments, including police agencies. We, at the statewide level, are still advocating for that. And so, when we talk about the, the bill that you're referencing that would require different types of police oversight, we actually feel strongly, at the League, representing, you know, the majority opinion of our members, that the state shouldn't be telling a town that they need to have another piece of citizen oversight. That doesn't mean we don't think you should, I want to be clear. It means we don't think that what's good for Bennington is, is good for victory. What's, you know, and, and so, I want to be clear that we don't have a strong position there, but if I, if I can take back to the League and to the Board and to our policy group, the desire for more specificity, specificity in the bill to, to, if I understand this right, you're concerned that though it, in theory, gives oversight, in the end, it doesn't actually give the, the Citizen Advisory Board the authority to do what it needs to do to provide that oversight, right?
Well, I'll, I will just, and, and I, we haven't talked about this that much yet, but it would seem to me, I, I would agree that it, that what's good for Bennington may not be good for victory or any other small town. But it seems to me that, that the legislature should allow those towns that wish to have, or, or those town Select Boards that wish to delegate that authority to a well-trained, selected group of citizens who would act on our behalf, but with our continuing oversight. It, it would seem to me that that would work, that, that option should be available, and it doesn't appear to be available now.
And Ted, I mean, you could follow up with Stu, who has been working with our Town Council, so we have some very specific points that Merrill has raised. That, that would be helpful.
Right. That's perfect, that's why I am here, I need to hear this directly. And Stu has, I want to also give kudos, before I get to the local option tax again, to, to Stu on police reform in general. You may also know that the qualified immunity topic has been talked about a lot in the, in the State House, and it's a complex, difficult issue. And as part of VLCT's perspectives on police reform, we are very clear that, that qualified immunity in and of itself is not real police reform. It doesn't, it doesn't hold the police officer accountable, it's not what will make a police officer, you know, lose their license. We have different certification, we have different proposals there. And I just want to acknowledge the help of Stu and others to educate the legislature about that, so that we are trying to look after the, you know, functionality of our police, police departments across the state. On the local option tax, just again, so, what we're, what we have acknowledged year over year, and when I come into this League position, understanding is that our board and you, the members, really value local control. However, going back to the concept that we're a Dillon's Rule state, which for those in the audience who are watching at home, if anybody is watching at home ever, know that Dillon's Rule state means that there's an Iowa Supreme Court case from a hundred and some odd years ago that said that unless a state has given a town a power, it doesn't get to do anything. And so, what we find is, year after year, we're butting heads with the legislature and with, you know, other branches, the governor included sometimes, over what authorities towns have. And we're, we have to bring, you know, charters to them to be, after your voters adopt them, after you adopt them, after you adopt some ordinances, they still have to go to the legislature to be approved. And so, instead of butting heads with them and fighting over whether or not local control is, you know, and preemption is a problem, we've tried to identify some areas where the legislature has said yes to things in past charters, or where the legislature has given ordinance authority, and we've tried to build a bill that includes these consensus items. And that includes things like the local option tax. There's 20 communities that have local option tax in place, there's another 20 some odd communities that have meals, rooms, tax, local option tax in place. So, why wouldn't the legislature be okay with another town adding the local option tax? Similar thing, we have charters that allow the recall of elected officials. Well, if you're not a chartered community that has the recall of elected officials, you can't recall an official unless you go to the legislature and get it approved. So, so we're trying to create processes where if your citizenry and your Select Board says yes to something, that this legislature has said yes to something before, that, that we can make this easier for communities going forward without being confrontational. Our goal is to recognize that the legislature and local government actually have a lot in common, and local government can be the most effective way to implement some of their goals. Does that answer the question, Jim? So, sales tax was just one example of the, the ordinances and authorities we're trying to include, and is currently included in S-181, local option sales tax.
Other issues that you want Ted to be aware of in the Select Board? Yes, please.
Sure, so, this is a little different. I wasn't really sure whether or not to bring this up, but I will, because it really, I can get, it's benefiting our town. I've been feeling that the safety of our town and our town officials, employees, our police has, has been impacted in the past couple of years. It's been pretty divisive in so many ways, and for we've been all feeling it, COVID and other things. But a couple of years ago, there was a gentleman on our corner that, that I think impacted our town a little bit, masked with a gun, and different things like that in the past couple of years. And I'm not really sure what types of things we could do to do with that.
Are you talking general public safety, or are you talking, you know, municipal official and volunteer safety?
More in our, in our town specifically, but broadly as well.
But less about, you're not talking about the police not doing their job, you're talking about, like, the person who was on Four Corners for the whole summer?
Right, I'm feeling that our, our, our police are impacted by that, and our town employees are impacted by that, and our municipal officials are impacted by that. So, I'm, I'm feeling that, the safety of our, our town.
Yep. I will share something that we're not doing that we're considered doing. How's that, considering doing?
I know, it's a tough one.
It is, and so, here's, boy, big issue, right? Public safety in general, but then we talk about municipal officials and public safety and the, the, you know, election security of officials and the targeting of officials. The National League of Cities recently did a study that showed that eight out of 10 municipal officials they surveyed had suffered some form of hate speech or hate act upon them in the last year.
What percentage?
Eight out of 10. Eight, 80%. It's a scary statistic that, that, you know, just demonstrates an increase in incivility, an increase in the rhetoric that kind of, we, like, as Ramoners, like to think we're immune to, but it's creeping in, and we're seeing it. And so, we're talking about how do we help municipal officials de-escalate these situations? How do you have these tough conversations which need to happen without yelling at each other, without threatening each other? It sounds a little different than what you were talking about. We have talked with some organizations that provide training in these types of services. We've, we've talked to legislators about this. And then, there's the larger issue of, you know, mental health, substance abuse disorder, go down a long list of things that contribute to that, right? That, that make the entire public unsafe. We, the League, every two years, do a full analysis of our public policy positions, and we invite selectmen and public officials to actually sit, Stu, I'm sure you've sat on these before, our policy committees, and public safety is one of them, as well as health. And we ask municipal officials, what should we be working on in the next two years in the legislature and at the national level on to deal with these issues? And so, that's where I think something like that would be really, that's the right home for it. So, maybe we could follow up, as, it'll convene in August, and we'll look for volunteers in July, and see if there might be a place we might be able to tuck that in and talk about it. Thanks for flagging it.
Can I, I do want to, I do want to follow up on the ADA, if you have any resources for us, and also, I want to ask, so, as a village, the village of North Bennington, if they wanted to use your services, do they use them as part of the town, or you know?
No, we already do it all on.
Okay, okay, so you use them directly? Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
On the ADA front, I can say that, off the top of my head, I don't know what services we already have, but I am sure that we provide some model policies and, you know, some amount of legal consultation on the ADA analysis. But I'll have to bring it back and just circle back with an email.
Okay, that'd be great.
I just want to piggyback on what Sarah said, I really appreciate you bringing that up, actually. Could there be, is there already any training for Select Board members on how to handle the threats and the feeling of feeling unsafe as an elected official? That would be a great thing. I, I guess when you mentioned you're having, municipalities are having trouble recruiting people to serve, that could possibly be a reason, so.
Absolutely. So, it depends how deep you want to go, right? I, I would say that we haven't offered an in-depth training about de-escalation and perhaps therapy.
Sign me up.
Right? But we, we are, in just about six weeks, four weeks, I'm forgetting where we are in the calendar, given the weird weather. We are having a effective meetings.
Yes.
As part of our Select Board Institute, where we have Mary Peabody from UVM Extension coming, and one of our attorneys, Susan Senning, who will give a, a primer on how to run an effective meeting and how to de-escalate things. And how do you have a good public discussion while also following?
Open meeting law.
The somewhat arcane open meeting law that is all well-intentioned, but sometimes creates a really hard time of having a productive dialogue. So, try, I, I like to call it dueling pianos. You know, the law and reality, how do you get those things to work together so that you have a good meeting? And I think it'll be touched on there, but I will also say, I haven't found anybody doing a really good job of that kind of therapy slash truly deep skills on how to de-escalate and how to deal with the most difficult conversations, so we'll, I'll look into it.
And it's also not just meetings, but, I don't know how many of us are on Facebook, quite a few of us are not, thankfully for myself. But it's how, how to create boundaries for your own mental health and managing, I mean, we all have stressful lives outside of being on the Select Board, and it's, it's just, I know for, for some people, the social media piece can be completely overwhelming and consuming, and it's a, not only for Select Board members, but for society in general.
Which, which does for me, raises a question about, is there, thank you, that's, that's right, is there a model poli, I, I was trying to remember if I'd seen a model policy on social media. We have one for the, for the police department, but we don't have one for any of us, or for the rest of the employees, or the volunteers, you know, any number of options come to mind as a policy person.
I'm not sure if we have a model social media policy, but I know we have helped several municipalities adopt model municipality-wide social media policies, and so that's something that our Municipal Assistance Center could help with. We may have a model policy, I'm only a year in, maybe Stu knows. So, it, so I haven't actually memorized the library, and that one is a relatively new one. I know we had an issue about six months ago with another member municipality, and we were able to help them adopt a policy for the whole municipality.
And if I, if I could say, Bruce, we are currently working with the League, reviewing our personnel policies, which are a long time coming. COVID has really slowed our ability to get that work done, because many of the employees at the League were working from home during COVID. But our new personnel policy, updated personnel policy, will include a social media policy. I don't know that the League has a model, but we're working very closely with, with an employee at the League to make sure that...
That would be great as an update, I think, for the Select Board and the community, because, you know, we, we, that's great, that's great, but I think it's also news to us, so it would be wonderful.
Can't tell you everything.
All right, I'm writing them down. So, no, but that would be a great update for all of us, just to hear how you're doing that, where you are in the process, you know?
We're, we're, at this point, we're, we're actually nowhere.
Well, I didn't mean right this second, but at some point, yeah, an update when you feel like it's appropriate.
We, we've gone, we've, we've gone over our policy, we've, we've been working with an individual at the League, they have our policies, they're, they're providing us with updated language and bringing us in current with any laws that may have changed, but we're, we're not there yet. I'd love to finish the work and then report on it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ted, you know, you touched on this idea, or I think Jeanie, Jeanie did, on de-escalation, and I'm thinking in a more global sense, well, not global, but local sense. And that is, you know, I think every town has two or three or more narrative wells who really are just hell-bent on malice, and I wonder, has there ever been a time or a community in the state that you know of that tried to, you know, mend fences with these people that become so stubborn and dug in that it makes dialogue virtually impossible? But it, you know, at least, you know, maybe break a window and get a little light in there. Do you see where I'm going with that?
I do, and I don't know that I have, again, an example. Thank you, I'm so sorry. I don't know that I have an example, again, having only been here for a year, I haven't personally witnessed that. But certainly, the, the de-escalation techniques and the various number of interesting personalities that are on Select Boards and in the public, people have found interesting ways to convene people. I don't have an example of, off the top of my head, but I'll ping my team and circle back via email, one of my two follow-ups, ADA and de-escalation.
I, yeah, Mary, please.
I know nothing about this subject, but I was wondering if the League has any information or guidance or whatever on when, when people are looking to see if they could set up like a marijuana dispensary, or what do you call it, when you want to start selling things or growing things in a community? Where would I find information on that?
Sure.
I literally wouldn't know it if I fell on it, I will say.
May I answer that one, is that okay?
Sure.
So, let's start at the cannabis level, right? We had 42 communities evaluate whether or not to allow retail sale of cannabis on Town Meeting Day. The last time I checked, 37 of them voted yes. Bennington was one of them. Very few communities voted no, that ones that are still outstanding, I haven't been able to track down because they don't have a local paper that covered it or something like that. The, in addition to that, there were 33 that had already approved it, so we're up over 70 communities that have approved retail sale of cannabis. We have been providing one-on-one guidance, so you can call the Municipal Assistance Center and ask questions about that, but because this is not something that the municipality would be doing, right, it would be a private citizen, we haven't created a handbook or guidebook. The best I've seen is the Cannabis Control Board, the statewide organization published a municipal guide to cannabis, and it is useful. I will say that even the Control Board has said it is incomplete and just the start, right? It doesn't include everything, but this document is a really good start. This is where you would start, who you'd see who you need to call to ask questions to or email, and like I said, the Municipal Assistance Center is always happy to answer some questions, they might be able to help you too. I didn't pull the stats at North Bennington, I should have. What are the trustees, are you three or five?
Five.
Five. I wonder how much, you say you use the Municipal Assistance Center a lot.
I personally use the resource library a lot. I use the model policies a lot, but I now have a whole page of new good ideas to start looking at.
And, and Mary, you're a new trustee, yes?
Like a week ago.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, yeah. But she's been very involved in North Bennington politics. So, I want to be mindful of the time, and I'm thinking, is it, can we open this up? So I want to be mindful of the time, and I'm thinking, is it, can we open this up to the community now? Okay, so is there anyone that has a question that relates to what VLCT does, yeah, and how the town should be interfacing with them? Yes, please state your name and town of residence and...
Hi, I am a resident of Bennington. My name's Colleen Harrington, and I'm really unfamiliar with your program, and I'm just wondering, what exactly is entailed in the membership, and what does Bennington pay for it?
And Colleen, you came in a little late, so I apologize for that. There was a, yeah, there was a full...
I missed it. I was a couple of minutes late, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
And if that's explained in here, I had one other question. I hear you mentioned the local option tax a lot, and I'm wondering if the, with what you're talking about, would the Select Board be able to implement something like that without a vote going to the town?
Correct. May I answer? I don't know what the protocol here.
Oh, of course, yes, please, of course, answer, yes.
Yeah, so most importantly, what we were talking about, the local option tax, I didn't mean to talk about it a lot, so I apologize, but we, that was one example of a series of authorities that were trying to get the legislature to give to the town, instead of requiring the town to go to the legislature to get permission. However, I think almost every one of the authorities, including local option tax, requires the town to go to the voters in order to do anything. So the Select Board makes the decision to say, we want this, and then they go to the voters, and the voters have to authorize it. Right now, most municipal issues, in addition to those two steps, then need to go to the legislature, and the legislature needs to say yes or no, unless they've passed a law that allows the town to already do that. On the first question, I think most of your questions aren't answered in there. I am embarrassed to say that I don't know the annual dues of Bennington off the top of my head, but I can tell you that the way the Vermont League of Cities and Towns operates, every member of the League, all 246 cities and towns, pay a dues structure based on the number of residents they have, and based on a base fee. And then in addition to that, we have associate members that pay a fixed fee, but they don't get access to all of our services. And then communities like Bennington pay for insurance and things like that, based on how they, how much they use and what their liabilities are, based on everything from payroll to property taxes, to grant lists, to past risk history.
And Colleen, Bennington is in the $18,000 to $20,000 annually as our dues to the League.
Okay, thank you, Stu. Other questions for Ted? We have the expert here, so, yes, Jonah?
As the Communications Coordinator, I did have a question, and I did reach out to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and my question was around record keeping. We're a town, the first town of Vermont, we have 261 years of records. But of course, in this modern world we live in with social media, we have now created a new venue for record keeping potentially. And one of the first emails I got on the job was being solicited by out-of-state companies that wanted us to pay to record our social media postings. And of course, I wanted, was curious how much this costs. It was quite a bit of money, several hundreds of dollars per month, and wearing my tax-paying citizen fiscal hat, and as a town employee, of course, we don't like spending money when we don't have to. So I did reach out, asking that question, whether or not there was specific guidance on that. I was directed to the Secretary of State for more information, which I did follow up on. And currently, what we are doing is, anything that's unique content that we post on social media, we also post on our town website, so we have control over that information and are able to preserve it in accordance with public records laws for however long we need to, which for us is pretty much forever. So that strikes me as an area where as these new communication venues emerge, such as social media, guidance from the VCLT on what the responsibilities for municipalities that we need to follow would be extremely useful, so we don't have to pay our tax dollars to out-of-state firms to record that information for us.
Thank you. I will say that I know our team has fielded questions like that, and I know we do rely heavily on, I think it's called VERASA, the records organization at the Secretary of State's office, but I'm going to bring that one back and noodle on this. Now, I've got three to follow up with, I love it.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions?
It's not really a question, it's perhaps an opportunity. We had an individual come into the office today, very, very angry, because he received a letter from a real estate company, out-of-state real estate company, offering to buy his home based on the assessed value. And his argument with us was, how did you give that to them? And we had to explain to the individual that our entire grant list is up and available to the public. You can access it via the website. So that information is not provided necessarily by us, but anyone can achieve it, and I say this for people out there who may be also getting these letters and wondering, how in the heck did they get this information? Well, it's out there, it's a matter of public record, and it's available statewide for everyone who is interested.
It is a who knew. Okay, now we know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions before I jump in? Okay, okay.
The last question.
Okay. And this may be completely off-base, but hey, you're here. Does VLCT get involved at all with social issues that we're dealing with statewide, such as homelessness, the hotel situation, the opioid crisis, all those sorts of things? Is there anything that VLCT can offer as far as guidance or resources?
Absolutely. The two ways we get involved, the most common way is on advocacy side. So through that two-year advocacy process I mentioned, we stake out positions, and then we go to the legislature and fight for them. So we have had to assist other organizations get money for housing, for downtown development, for economic development projects, things along those lines. That's the big way, advocating a certain way, advocating for certain policies that affect, you know, anti-homelessness policies, to try to get effective ones that work for municipalities. The second way we do that is, you know, the hotel example is a good example, a lot of our anchor communities are, you know, our county seats have seen an influx of new residents who need new services, and the League has advocated on their behalf, these communities' behalf, as those have come in, to Secretaries of AHS, Secretaries and Commissioners of Public Safety and other places about finding resources for communities immediately, or mitigating problems immediately, actually intervening. So those are the two ways we get involved, but we don't have resources ourselves to help with the situation. We're really an advocate and a connective tissue on those things usually.
And when I said resources, I didn't only mean money.
Yeah.
I meant information.
Yes, so we can help with that, and please let me know.
Thank you.
This is not a question, it's just a compliment, actually. I wanted to thank the League particularly for the expertise, the kindness, the openness to discussion of Trevor Whipple, who worked with me and our subcommittee and with the policy drafters when we were working with police policy. Trevor is, seems, is highly respected, and I just found his openness to sharing what he knew to be exceptional, and I wanted the community to know what a resource he was for us.
Can I add to that?
Yesterday, you and I spoke, Ted, and I couldn't remember the attorney that the town and myself and the former chair had worked with, Mick Letty is his name, and he was great.
All right. That's wonderful. Yeah, I mean, we have, we are so thankful to have you in the state, you serve us well, and now we have three to four to five pages of new ways that you can help us.
Absolutely.
So this has been really, really helpful. Stuart, thank you for making sure that we could all hear from Ted and ask our questions. And so, any more questions? Last call for questions. All right, well, that could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move with that we adjourned.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.